So thanks for, uh, thanks for attending tonight. I appreciate that you're taking time out of your evening to, to be here. Uh, we had. I've hosted a number of, of these meetings online and they can be, um, they can be quite useful because with this webinar format, it allows me to present, um, so visual presentations and then take questions and answers, uh, take question story, hopefully provide answers. And then we, we record them, so we post them on our website. So we have a YouTube channel and we've posted the ones for Manitick and North Core, which means if people have not been able to, are not able to attend, uh, live, uh, they can watch it afterwards. Everyone who's in attendance, you're, it's all confidential. Uh, I'm the only one who sees the attendees. I'm the only one that sees the questions. Uh, and then we, and then the chat as well. So we'll go through the two presentations. My intent is to try to answer all the questions that come up. If there's anything I, I don't get to, um, by all means, uh, my, you know, email me. We have that contact info shortly. And, uh, I'll, after the meeting's over, I run through the whole chats and questions to make sure I, I caught everything. And if I didn't, I'll reach out because I know, I'll know for the most part who, who asked the questions. So again, thank you and we'll, uh, we'll start with the presentation. It's just a generic presentation. I go through this with each community and then I have a more specific presentation that speaks more to what's going on in Richmond. Specifically about developments, um, current, future, uh, and well into the future. So I have a massive cursor here just, uh, cause it'll help with the, the map, the map program later. So welcome. Obviously it's Richmond, Richmond themed. So I was trying to, uh, begin with, covering off some of my roles and responsibilities on council, you know, during this term of council. So these are all the things that I sit on. Uh, so I chaired the environment committee. I also just recently, um, joined a, by virtue of being the chair of environment committee, I recently, uh, was appointed to a, an advisory board for Ottawa Climate Action Fund, which is a group that's, they have some money to be able to leverage, uh, other opportunities to help in our, our climate change, um, master plan implementation. Uh, so I sit on that committee. Obviously I'm on a few other committees, finance, economic development committee, which met earlier today. Uh, planning committee, Icos, real affairs committee, built their subcommittee. Uh, you can see them all. I'm, I sit on OCH. Um, I chair the planning advisory committee and then I sit on the conservation authority as well as three BIAs. And we have a series of sponsor groups at the city as well. So council set up these sponsors groups where there's maybe four or five or six counselors on a, on a specific group to deal with a specific issue. So we have them mainly for our, our plan development. I sit on pretty much all of them. So official plan, transportation master plan, climate change master plan and solid waste master plan. And then we have a new one that we just started with, uh, Lansdowne Park, just to talk about the future of Lansdowne Park, what are the opportunities there? And so I'm sitting on that as well. So that's, that's that. I will go on to just some city issues. I, I don't want to take too, I'm not going to take too much time on the citywide stuff. Cause I want to give more time for, for local stuff, but just some, some high level sort of updates on certain things. So obviously COVID-19, response and recovery, those are, that's something that's dominated, obviously everything that we've done for the last, uh, 14 months, um, at the city. We try to make sure that we're still on track with everything else. We've had to shift, obviously. Well, I'm here meeting with you in this way. Normally we'd be on the, uh, either at the second floor of the Richmond Arena, we'd be meeting in the agricultural building. Uh, that was a good spot to meet too for, for things like this or, or some of the church halls, uh, but so we've moved online for these and, and you know, it works to a degree. Obviously there's, there's some benefit to being in person, but there's also some benefit to, to doing what we're doing here as well. Someone asked if I've been able to expand the presentation screen. I, I, I haven't. It's full screen on my, on my thing. So as I, as I go through, uh, if you could, might have to adjust the settings on your own screen possibly, but it should be. Did I not share that screen? No, you, use in the, in the chat box, can you say that you can see the screen that says city issues with the solid waste master plan? Okay, perfect. Okay. So if, if you can't see that, if you can't see it all, then you might have to adjust the settings on your own screen. So again, so that, so COVID-19, obviously we're, we're going further than that. Fifty percent of Ottawaans have received, received their first dose. Uh, thank you for, for the support in, in the community. I know that we held a pop-up, a pop-up clinic in, in North Core, or sorry, in Richmond, um, to do vaccinations a little while ago. I'm hoping that we will be able to come back and do, do another one, uh, in the future, um, as we get more doses. Obviously we're expecting a lot in June. And obviously everyone is now eligible over the age of eighteen, which is a huge step from where we were just, uh, just two months ago. Uh, official plan review. So that's currently underway. That wraps up this fall. Um, not a, not a ton of impact on, on the village of Richmond. It's, it's really predominantly focused on the urban area, um, some urban boundary expansion, not really reaching too far into, into our area. Obviously, you know, took a hard line last May on agricultural lands, trying to make sure that we, we hold that hard line. In, in south of Stittsville, south of Kanata, that's the best land that we have in the, in eastern Ontario, not just the city, but eastern Ontario. So all the land north of Richmond, uh, important to protect that, to draw that hard line. We're doing the same thing in Barhaven. We, we will move the line down to Barnesdale for the urban boundary, but everything south of Barnesdale, you know, protecting that, that's prime agricultural land as well. We've had a bit of a hiccup in, in Riverside South. Uh, we did say early on that we wanted to protect agricultural land. There was a motion brought forward back in October that would actually, uh, bring a hundred hectares of private cultural land in Riverside South into the urban boundary, uh, because some notion that it's, it's close enough to transit. Well, it's not close enough to actually benefit from any high density development. It's over a thousand meters away from the station. The two stations that are proposed in Riverside South are both surrounded by development or greenbelt. You can't touch that. But the notion that it's okay to dip into agricultural land because there's transit is something that I don't want to see succeed. Um, just, and the example for that is, if you look at the land directly south of Fernbank Road, LRT phase three goes into Kanata and goes into Stittsville. And it ends at Robert Grant, which is a new, a new north-south road that runs between Fernbank and Hazelene, eventually will connect up to Pladium and eventually to the four seventeen near, near Huntmark. There's to be a, a transit station, LRT transit station at, at Robert Grant Hazelene. Direct, they, they have the line. It's, it's, they have the corridor to continue that to Fernbank Road. The only reason why it's gone where it has gone in Riverside South is because the developers, the landowners have paid for it to be extended. So they paid to be extended and now council is saying, well, we should add land for them. Well, if I'm, if I own land south of Fernbank Road, you can be damn sure that I'm going to be offering to pay for LRT extension down to Fernbank Road. Now this isn't going to happen overnight. This is going to happen five years, not going to happen 10 years. But these plans, these official plans, these are for twenty and thirty years. This is about the future. Once you bring that line down to Fernbank Road, now you're talking about four hundred hectares of land, all north of Fleellen. That could be a prime candidate for urban boundary expansion based on adding land in Riverside South. So I'm trying to make sure that we don't add that land in Riverside South and that if we do, we're damn sure that it's not actually, actually primary cultural land. Because we, so we've asked for a soil study to be done on the land. We need to make sure that council maintains its integrity on, on protecting agricultural land because once you lose it, there's not much, there's not much there to protect that land south of Stittsville. If you bring transit, you bring urban boundary down to Fleellen, you bring transit down to Fleellen, then you bring urban boundary down to Fallowfield, you bring transit down to Fallowfield. I'm talking fifty, sixty, seventy years, but the point is it gets there if you open the door. And I'm trying to make sure that council this term closes that door. So village plans, um, not much in the way for, uh, we will be talking about village plans after the official plan is approved. We've identified, you know, some growth communities. I mean, I think you all know that Richmond is one of them. Manitick is another, Carp, Greeley. Or two more that will see more of the growth in the rural area. Uh, we don't project, you know, when we talk about four hundred thousand people coming to the city of Ottawa between now and twenty forty-six. We don't project a big percentage of that to be in the rural area. We haven't changed any of our modeling for the rural areas. So there's no projected, boundary expansions for villages. Um, we're not seeing anything. We're not trying to push in more than what was already able to be there in the villages, um, specifically in, in Richmond. So, uh, we, we also did climate change master plan. We proved that in January of twenty twenty. We're currently in the midst of a solid waste master plan that will, phase two of that will come to environment committee next month, which will be talking about a lot of things. We're talking about the future of the landfill. We're talking about, you know, what are the options for processing waste? What are the options for, uh, further waste reduction, uh, further diversion? So a lot, a lot of parts to that, that'll be a big discussion it, at the end of June, environment committee. And then ward band review. So we did award band review in, in just last year, approved it this year, sorry, approved twenty twenty and that'll be in effect for twenty twenty-two election. Our ward, war twenty-one doesn't change a ton. Uh, there's just a couple of spots. Stittsville area, Barhaven area that kind of gets shifted. I represent a area north of Stittsville on Carp Road that actually gets moved into West Carlton. Uh, so it, it gets shifted back. So the northern boundary for, for war twenty-one post twenty twenty-two will be Hazelene on the west side of Stittsville and then it'll come down and include all of Goldburn again and all of, uh, Rita, former Rita Township. All right. So moving on to the next thing. So just to quickly through the budget. So we have, uh, the budget for twenty twenty-one, which we approved back in November, December. Three point nine four billion dollars. You can see this is the, the pilot shows the, just where the money comes from. Obviously a lot of it comes from property taxes, but there's a number of other sources as well. And then we slip to the next slide, which shows where it's spent. So you can see, obviously it goes in a lot of different directions. The biggest chunk of that pie, uh, goes to community social services. And if I just go back to the previous slide, the money for that actually comes from the, uh, the provincial grants for the most part. We are required to offer certain programs and the province provides us the funds to do so. Uh, it's not really a choice that we have. It's something that we have to provide those services on behalf of the province. And so that's where that community social services money comes from, for the most part. And you see the other various sources, obviously water, sewer, uh, solid waste. Those are things that are funded with specific user fees, uh, police services budget and so on and so forth. So you see that, um, just quickly through, you know, what the budget is. And I'm going to talk a bit more about renewal, uh, in Richmond. But it's really a maintain services budget. We're, we're not trying to, uh, we don't want to come back to residents for more. I mean, we've, we've made a commitment for tax increases in the past ten years and the next, the next two as well. And we want to make sure we're consistent with that. Uh, we don't want to be, because of COVID, we don't want to be leaning heavily on people who can least afford it. So we've, it's a pretty basic budget, but it, it does have the continued commitment to our renewal funding and a special focus on housing emergency services. So an increased funding to housing. So about fifty million dollars annually to build new affordable housing. That's the largest amount we've ever spent, uh, in one year. And we're going to continue that going forward. So onto local stuff. I put the first thing around the badge is the two eighty-three. So in the past, we've been talking in the last two years, talking about providing more, more busing in Richmond. And we do have the ability to provide an extra bus, uh, but COVID has changed some things. So that's delayed. The, the idea would be a fifth bus. We're actually going to extend more of the buses to Munster as well. Try to maximize the fact that the two eighty-three is the best rural, uh, the best used rural transit route that exists. I know prior to COVID, we were getting a lot of concerns about the LRT impacts and the, the transfers at Tonys. We were trying to address those. They were getting better. But we're certainly hopeful that as we come out of COVID, that LRT doesn't become the number one story again, as it was before COVID. So more on the local stuff, uh, traffic things. I mean, you've seen some of the information I've provided recently about, uh, gateway signage in the village. So, we're putting up at the entrance. So off of, really off of Perth Street and McBean, every, you know, road off of those into those subdivisions, those communities will all have, uh, gateway forty signs. So the whole area is a forty now. We have a number of unsigned, unsigned, uh, roads in, 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 in Richmond, most notably Fortune Street, which was an unsigned fifty. So this now makes it a forty. Uh, there's a few other roads that were also unsigned and they default to, to fifty zone. So they'll now all be forty. And then on the, that sign is just currently being installed. So some places have already been done. I think some are still waiting, but it's all coming. And it'll be every single community in, in, in the village, uh, Perth Streets, uh, crosswalk. So that is something that has generated a bit of comment. We had a, a funding program that was offered to us at the end of twenty twenty and it's the investing in Canada infrastructure program from the federal government. The province has a, a role in it as well. And this one specifically had money that was identified for certain purposes, mostly, you know, transit, uh, transportation, mobility opportunities. Uh, so we could do sidewalks, we could do different things and it was offered to me as to what, you know, what we wanted. Staff had originally been working on a, a something for Manitick. It wasn't going to work. It all had to be done within twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So it has to be designed, constructed, finished all by the end of twenty twenty-one in order to be eligible for the funding. Obviously we, we're aware of, of the concerns at Shea and Perth. Uh, we've done that review on stabilization. Uh, it doesn't meet the warrant. It still doesn't meet the warrant. In twenty sixteen, that intersection was at fifty-three percent of the warrants. It was at sixty-two percent in twenty nineteen. It gets reviewed every, every three years. So in that case, we're just not there yet. Uh, so it was never an opportunity to say crosswalk or satellites at Perth and Shea. It was, do we keep waiting for the satellites or do I take this opportunity now? Because the warrants for crosswalks are even more difficult than the warrants for a signalization. The potential should actually be there. We know people cross there. We know there's, there's really nowhere east of Huntley to cross safely. Uh, so the opportunity came about and I decided to, uh, put this forward as an option. So uh, near, you know, between Gamble and Shea will put in a crosswalk, a signalized, an overhead signalized crosswalk, funded entirely from that, that program, that funding program that was, uh, received by the city at the end of, of twenty twenty. And it will be put in place this, this summer. So that's that. And then on to infrastructure. We don't have any, uh, actual renewal projects planned right now for, uh, for Richmond. Uh, obviously in recent years, we've done quite a bit of work in and around Richmond, uh, Joyce Road, the two sections of Ottawa Street. Shea Road, Huntley Road have all been, have all been done recently. Uh, so we have some roads coming up. Mansfield Road north of, of the village, just the part that wasn't done a few years ago. So the section between Conley and Huntley is slated to be done within the next two years. Uh, McBean Street, and that's one where it's not just renewal. I've asked for staff to be able to look at ways to, to improve the, the street. Don't just go resurface it, but actually improve how it operates. We, we do get a lot of speeding concerns on, on McBean Street. I don't want to go and turn it into what Perth Street became in two thousand and five, uh, but I'd like to look at it to see, you know, could we do some bull bouts? Could we create proper, proper sort of parking bays and parking, you know, lanes on the side so that when people aren't parked in the road, it doesn't look like a, you know, a four lane highway through the middle of, of the village by two schools. Um, and of course we have the nursery school still there. Uh, so that's going to be the next two, three years. There will be some work on design for that. So, uh, look for that. Other streets, uh, Colonel Murray and Cockburn, both north of, of the Jock are both slated for renewal in the next few years. Uh, Christopher Hamilton as well on that same side of McBean. Uh, we're planning to upgrade Conley Road to a hard surface, the south side of Conley Road between Mansfield and Franktown. And there's a bunch of work right now ongoing, um, development, planning wise, and then construction wise for pumping station and force main. Uh, so this is to accommodate future growth. Um, and it's, it's that a few years ago, obviously the, it became clear that our pumping station and the force main were at capacity. We've, we have a three-phase project. The phase one has already been done. That was upgrading the line, uh, behind Delair that connects out to Eagleson to the lagoons. The next phase of that project twins the, twins the forced main up to Fallowfield and then phase three goes from Fallowfield to Can, to Kanata, uh, to Glen Cairn. And then there's some work in the pumping station as well. At this point, there's no intention to, we don't have a belief in that we're at the, uh, enlarge the pumping station, uh, but there's a lot of work still in the planning phase to figure all, how that all works to be able to take in the new, the new capacity. The work is being front ended by Maddy Homes. And Maddy will then get payback through, um, through growth. So as they sell homes, they get credit for the work that they've already contributed to. Uh, so it's, it's, it's work that's paid for by growth. And then Maynell, uh, roundabouts at, uh, at Maynell, that should be either next year or the year after. I think I'm, I think, I'm hoping it's twenty twenty-two, but it's, it's over the next, uh, year and a half to two years. There will be a roundabout at Maynell and Perth Street. Uh, just a question about, Perth and Shea. Okay. So I mentioned that's already so, um, Perth and Shea. Yeah. So just a question about the lights at, at Perth and Shea, which I just touched on just a second ago. So it's, it's not there yet. It's still going to be likely a bit of time. There's going to be more of, I'm going to get, when I get to developments, I'll talk more about that, that plaza there, because it's going to be finished soon. As that comes and a little bit of growth, a bit more growth with the Creekside community, that'll help trigger that, um, that warrant. We, it essentially it's a, it's a traffic, it's a traffic situation. So the volume of traffic on Perth Street versus the volume of traffic on Shea and how that works. And then the, the wait times for turning. It's how they, they review it all. Um, okay. Sorry. I'm going to keep on going here. Oops. So just to quickly communication stuff. So obviously, um, communication hasn't been as easy during COVID. We don't have enough, uh, we don't have, uh, opportunity to meet pub person, as I said, as well. So we still do the things that we've always done. So websites, our social media through Twitter and whatnots, um, newspaper columns in the community voice and advanced messenger, which thankfully we have, uh, two now that serve Richmond, which is great. Are, we started a podcast last year, so twenty-one podcast. You can find that on, you can look it up. Just Scott Moffett's twenty-one podcast, anywhere you listen to podcasts online. Uh, you can find links to it on our website as well. And we focus on a bunch of issues. So actually I think the, the best one that we, we had the most listens on was the one that we did on, uh, the Kai Van proposal and the Greenland's and the Laughinland. Uh, had over two hundred and fifty listens to that. So it's kind of nice to be able to connect in, in a, in a different way, uh, during a time like this. Our e-newsletter, we send it out weekly. It has all the up-to-date COVID information, includes our columns as well. So that's all there. Speeding, oh, sorry, I should lift it up longer. So speeding, obviously a big issue that we see in every community. So always include this slide when we're talking about, when we're talking with the community, autoplease.ca slash online reporting. That's, that's where you need to go. If you have concerns about speeding, you need to go there, report it there. And, uh, when you go to the autoplease.ca, this page comes up and you can just click on that link. It is fast and easy. I've done it myself. Uh, so that's where you want to go to report speeding concerns in the community. That's how Auto Police, uh, in, uh, deploys their enforcement units. So that's that. So that's my contact, which leave it up there for a couple of seconds, uh, just so in case you want to write anything down, uh, for contact wise. I just reading, sorry. If I stop for a second, I'm just staring at the screen. It's because I'm reading stuff. So all the questions come up and sometimes it takes me a while to read. It looks like I'm just pausing and looking longingly um, into the distance, but really I'm actually reading, uh, something that is coming from you. So it was just a question about safety concern at Shea and Moore, because people don't actually stop at the stop sign. Um, so that's fair. So, uh, we've tried to do some things on Shea in recent years to, you know, try to, um, lower the speed of traffic. It's not that great of coming off the curve, especially when we surfaced Shea Road. It, uh, we know that that usually leads to a bit more speeding, but we have been looking at that. Again, I think I've asked staff to see what, what kind of options we can do, uh, in order to better slow the traffic as it comes into the village from southbound on Shea. But certainly, you know, I just had that information up there about online reporting. If you're seeing regularity of, of people running that stop sign, that's where to go. Report that to Auto Police. Uh, they'll come up. We know they're in the village. Uh, we do see them often in the village. Sometimes they're parked, but they're, uh, they are here. So, and I know that Auto Police has a, has a increased enforcement out right now for speeding and other infractions, May and June. Uh, so certainly now's the time to send that in as a, as a concern in our report. So I'm going to move from this, uh, presentation on to another one. So you can see my face for two seconds here before I load up the next presentation. And this one is strictly on, on development. So what's going on in Richmond? What's permitted? What's approved? I start with the old Belden Atlas map of, of the village. I do this because this shows the village boundary as it was in the eighteen hundreds. And not a lot has changed. Um, so the village boundary, you can see it. So obviously there's your traditional grid. You know, bordered by Perth to the north, Ottawa to the south, uh, what used to be just Queen Street and King Street to the, uh, east and west. And then around that, you can kind of see the, the sort of smaller areas. It's, it's corporation limits. So that's the old village boundary, that corporation limit. So there was the grid, the original grid, uh, system designed for, for the village of Richmond. And then you have the, the expansion areas and that's where really north, west and south, those boundaries aren't different really today, uh, than they, than they were back then. And I'll just bring up the next map which shows it. So the big changes are really on the, on the east side, uh, extending beyond, um, beyond Shea over to, to Eagleson, taking in the, taking in the, uh, the lagoons as well. But I'll go through, um, more. So here's your, your map of Richmond. I'm just going to touch through a few spots as we, as we go along here. So some areas where there's, there's already approved development and then where we see things are, are coming and where we don't yet have applications for stuff, but the potential exists. So first things first, this one's a long time in the planning phase. It is approved. I don't have a timeline on when it's actually being constructed. This is at eleven King Street. So between King and Cockburn, north of Hamilton Street. Uh, you can see it's a twenty unit development. Um, it's planned to be, it's, I think it's still semi-detached units. But I could be wrong. It might be singles now. It was, it was originally planned to semi-detached units, but it looks like it might just be singles now. So that's, uh, that didn't require, uh, zoning change. It just would had to, had to go through a, a site plan. So that's that one. That's Talis Homes doing that. Uh, we go up here just to, sorry for the fogginess, but you'll see I'll, I'll bring stuff into it. So that's the Creekside Community by Cardell. Obviously approved and currently under construction. Cardell does have a secondary application up here off of Hemp Hill Street. Uh, so there's a small area off of Hemp Hill that's actually inside the village boundary and it fits this. So it fits an eight lot development. So you can see the curve here off of Shea, the curve of Hemp Hill as it runs, uh, into Gamble. And then off of that would be, uh, a new cul-de-sac built with lots off of, off of that extension and off of Hemp Hill and one additional lot, large lot off of Shea. This is currently applied for, it's currently pending. So it's not an active application at the moment, but it was applied a, a couple of years ago and it is, it is a Cardell application as well. So I'm going to zip down here to the plaza. So some update on the plaza. There was another submission just recently uh, in the last few days to finish off the, the plaza. So this is, this is what that new site plan looks like. So you see the, obviously the independent grocer here. Uh, Tim Hortons, the bank, you know, this, in this strip here, you have of course the first choice haircutters, the pet value, the subway, the dentist. And then what's in the LCBO up here. Now what's being proposed is, uh, a new building, uh, extension on to, on to the LCBO and it'll be very similar to the building down here. And what that looks like is, um, this. So you can see the LCBO and then, uh, four units being added on, uh, to that building as it runs out to Shea. I don't have tenants for those. I think they're just, uh, I think they're just adding that as a, as a placeholder that I don't think they're planning on building this one just yet. But this is what they're doing. It is the update their, their site plan. Uh, down here is a new, a new building proposed right at Shea and Perth. This is going to be, this was originally supposed to be like a restaurant and a couple of units. It's now going to be just one store. As you see the picture, you can likely, you might be able to likely guess what that is based on the, 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 the color coding, but that is a Dollarama. So they're proposing to build a Dollarama in that space at the corner of Shea and Perth. As I move just east of that, uh, you can see this is the entrance off of Perth Street. So just directly south of the, the Tim Hortons, it's a store, it's another, uh, it's a restaurant and it's a gas station. Obviously a little bit close to the other gas station, uh, but it is a permitted use in this plan, uh, for their, for this development. And that is what that'll look like. There is no, uh, branding yet on the, on the gas station. Uh, originally I think they were trying to look to see if they could do a mobile because it, it aligns with the, with the points program that runs with the independent grocer, uh, but they do have an ANW secured for that. So it's not a full, uh, it's not a full restaurant, standalone restaurant. It's attached to the gas station. So that is where we stand right there. Keep on moving through this. I do know these questions. I will go through them as we get to the, as I get to the end. I know I might have to fall back on some things as we go, but, uh, just want to run through it. So over to Fox Run. So this stuff is not exactly new. This is the, this is the phase one of Fox Run. This is stuff that's, a lot of it's already built. You can see Maynell runs through there as it hits, uh, Maynell in the middle as it hits Perth Street. A lot of these communities, Cantle, um, Pelham and, uh, you know, Equitation Circle, these are all, these are already there and already built. Um, so that's, that's the, that runs right into what would be the Maddy Lands to the south and then cross over to Perth Street. And you get the, the, the north half of the original Fox Run proposal. They're currently in the process, Maddy, uh, sorry, Kivin is of acquiring the hydro easement, uh, in order to build in that as well. Uh, but this here is that, that, that previously approved phase two of Fox Run. And this is the one that we had meetings on recently. It's just the most up-to-date, uh, plan. So it's that phase, that phase two of Fox Run is kind of stuck in the middle here. And then you have the And then you have the proposed a Green Eastlands here, a budding up against. Mirror Court and a budding up against Bald Eagle Crescent. And then you can come across to this stuff that's around the new the Richmond BMR. Which is just on the on the west side known as the Green Westland. So when they, when Kaivan acquired this property, it came with this property. So it's it doesn't have a direct connection to Fox Run because of the the Van Gogh drain that runs through here. And they have to have a setback from that drain as well, thirty meter setback. From the from the drain. So that's the way that stands right now. We had a meeting on that back in in February. But yeah, so still, that's been some tweaks. I think the residents in that area are aware of the tweaks that have been made to that that proposed. A plan for that area. If I go further south down to. The Madamie one, this was really. The longest subdivision plan process of life because Madamie was the first one to come in back in two thousand and eight. Between two thousand eight, two thousand ten, they proposed a development. Over the years, they end up securing these lands here on the south side, either side of Ottawa Street. Kaivan was was formed and and acquired the lands north of this. You have the community well, that's already the community well system is already in place. The Laughinlands were a piece that were optioned by Madamie, but eventually. Acquired by Kaivan instead. So it 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 doesn't form a part of the Madamie. Proposal, but you can see the phasing here. This was just draft approved. For for developments. I don't have a specific timeline on when their phasing will start because. This entire development is subject to the capacity issue I mentioned before. Madamie is front ending that project, as I mentioned, to get more capacity in the force main. In our sewer system to be able to permit development here. Phase two features a community park and a school. The O C T S B has asked for this space. But hasn't yet secured it. So I'm not sure what their timeline is. The community park is where we'll see. Things that have been asked for for quite a long time. So things like a skate park, a splash pad. Similar park is being built in the mental subdivision in Manatech, which also will include a splash pad and. Some large, some larger amenities that that community has not had similar to Richmond. So these two aren't that dissimilar from one another. So that is that. So you see it goes right down to the Jock River. This area is all floodplain here. So a little parquet up against the floodplain. But that's that's further on. That's phases four, five and six. So that'd be many years before we get to that. I think they're even expecting phase three. Not to be before maybe twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, which plays into the Laughinlands. Because the Laughinlands are that one little piece that comes out. And we had, this is where we met on recently to connection to Queen Charlotte at Burke. I should go back to that last one for a sec here. So. There is a Royal York connection here. So you see it connects Main L connects to Ottawa Street. Down here, but Royal York. Also connects through. To to Fortune. There is no road there right now. They have to build that. We'll say this development is being approved with the new thirty kilometer hour road standards. So all communities are supposed to be designed now for thirty kilometers. An hour. So the road, how this will look, and this is still phase three. So this is some time away. I have some little bit concerned with how this works and what we're going to do to manage this. I do expect that it would be a lot of pedestrian traffic in this way in this area, because you will have the community wanting to come to this. Community park. We don't know yet what the timeline for the school is. Existing community will likely come here. This community will likely go to St. Phillips. So. How this connection works. Is incredibly important to make sure that it's it's safe from a pedestrian standpoint, but there's still. A lot of time to work through that, to work through that. So I expect that to be a large conversation going forward. Sorry. So I'll go back to Laughinlands. So it has four connections, one to Burke Streets. But then three connections to that phase three of Madamie. This is the furthest off. Plan for Kaivan. They're not yet there with this. It won't be done for a few years as well. I'm hoping that we can make sure. The city can make sure that it aligns. Well, with phase three of Madamie so that we're not having a situation where. Well, I won't allow it. So I'll make sure that when we do the the zoning approval that we do not allow. Only this connection. I don't want to see construction coming through here. And I don't want to see this being the only connection as they wait for Madamie to build around it. We want to make sure that these connections exist, at least the access down to Ottawa Street, so that this entire subdivision. Isn't going only onto Burke Street. Because that would, it's obviously not how it's designed. So it wouldn't be fair to even do that, even if it's just for a couple of years. So we want to make sure we we warrant against that. We also want to work with, I've already talked to Kaivan about Burke Street itself. That needs work. You know, you can build to it. But this section here between Queen Charlotte. And Fortune needs work if we're going to expect again the pedestrian issue. Okay, so moving on. So this is, this now gets to, so everything I've just talked about is all either approved or proposed to be to be built. So it's in those stages. The next things I go to are all. You know, what's to come, what the potential is. So this map here. And I apologize, it's not the greatest. It's from our rural residential land survey. So if you just Google search City of Ottawa, rural residential land survey, you can find these maps. It shows what's. What the capacity is in these villages throughout the rural area and where those where that capacity exists. So it takes into account the floodplain. So obviously, we know there's a significant floodplain. In Richmond, which cuts off a lot of development potential. But two areas where there is potential are. Off of Eagleson Road. So. One, you've seen a lot of earthworks happening, some moving of some. Taking away of trees and some moving of dirt off of Ottawa Streets and Eagleson. And nothing's going on up here. This is Cardell. So I'm going to go through that just to show you exactly what those pieces are. So this is the piece that, so obviously you have your plaza here. You can see the outline of Creekside. It's all floodplain and behind Creekside up to to Flowing Creek. And then that floodplain continues very far into the lands over towards. Toward Eagleson Road. So in behind the gas station, this is all owned by Cardell. So Cardell can build here. This is all. Zoned as development reserve. So they would have to go through. You know, the development process, they'd have to apply for a plan subdivision, go through that public meeting process, the consultation process. But also, I mentioned that Madamie is paying to service their community through phase two. Both this one and the next one I show you, which is the one at Ottawa and Eagleson. They wouldn't be serviced by phase two. They need phase three, which means that's even further away. So that's why these aren't exactly on the forefront at the moment. So that's the one up. At Eagleson, you can see that's the village boundary there. It runs across from Hemp Hill directly across over to Eagleson. So that's the village boundary. Everything outside of that is all primary agricultural land. So we moved down to this other piece, and this is this whole section. So there's your village boundary on the south side. Everything south of that is zoned agricultural. Everything inside. This was the old industrial land. So these lands were all previously designated as industrial lands. Back, the same thing happened to Rio Township. They designated a whole bunch of land in North Core for industrial uses. Goldberg did the same. Goldberg municipalities for a time had to. Had to. Had to, sorry, I was just looking at something, had to identify specific areas for employment lands. Goldberg chose this this area here and identified it all for industrial sort of uses. Small commercial ability, but nothing ever happened with it. So the owners, previous owners had put in an offer. An application with the city, a proposal to convert it to residential uses, and that has happened. And since then, Taggart has purchased those lands. So what you see, the work you're seeing on those lands are by Taggart. It's by the owner. It does permit, it's all development reserve zoning. So it does permit. It does permit residential development in that area. And you believe there is a proposal for a small commercial piece at the corner of Ottawa and Eagleson. This is again, a little ways down the road. There's no servicing here. They don't have access to the water that. That Kaivan and Madamie have access to. They certainly don't have access to sewer. So they have to see that phase three upgrade for the force main and the pumping station. And they have to do a communal well system on these sites because we don't, we won't permit development here on on private well. So it has to be a communal well system as well. So that one's a bit down the road. And that's really where. I save those to the end because they really are the furthest ones away. But I know I have had some questions on what's going on there, why there's so much work going on there. And that's where that is. So on either those, so the Cardell one up here or Taggart. If there are submissions for that. There will be discussion in the community and with the city. And our office with how that proceeds, but just know that there is a lot of work. Before anything can happen on these two lands. We know that the Western Development Lands were first proposed in two thousand eight. And Madamie is only just getting approved and Kaivan is about two to three hundred units in. So these things take time. You'll never see. A rural village develop the same pace as a as a suburban community. It just is a whole different dynamic. One, the the demand isn't as high. And also just, there's a lot of. Factors to consider. Mental is the same. Mental in Manatech was proposed back in two thousand eight as well. And they're just into phase two of their development thirteen years later. So that is, that's that for my for our presentation. So I will close this. Let's go back to my face. And just run through what I see here so far in the questions. So one, one question, I might have, I might touch this. I might have touched on some of these things in the presentation. So as I read them, I might, you know, might be repetitive. But at this point, I just want to make sure I'm covering off the things that are that I'm seeing here. In the in the questions. And then again, I'll get to the chat box as well. So talking about those Green Eastlands, which I showed you earlier. The lands that are proposed, the Kaivan property just off the edge of of Mirror Court and Bald Eagle. So a question about it has some fifty two foot lots, forty two foot lots, sorry, on the on the. So the new submission was just brought in this past week. It should, it's all updated. What I showed you in the in this presentation. Is all fifty foot lots. So it's all fifty foot lots fronting on to Mirror Court. And it's all fifty foot lots backing on to Bald Eagle. So it's, that's where it stands right now. I know there were, I know there were residents who were. Who were. Asking for, you know, for larger lots, sixty five foot lots. It's, it's, you know, it's not. It's not a perfect comparison to. To Bald Eagle and and Mira because while they're on sewer, they're also on private well. So these new lots will be on on the water system from the Kaivan community. So. You know, as as the community has grown, if you saw with the with the map I showed you where it originally was just that grid. Those lots were all, you know, a hundred by two hundred lots and some of them have been subdivided over the years. But they were all originally built on on well and septic. Sewers came in later on and then communal wells in certain areas. We saw that in the. In the Delair area and Shannon House, when that community was built, it was smaller lots because it was on both services. And it's the same thing you see. So Kings Grant and Richmond Oaks are very similar to one another on on sewer, but then also on private well. But as you move into the future growth areas, you will see a bit, a bit of a higher density. Some of the setbacks are a bit bigger than what you'd see in suburban areas, trying to find, you know, space to fit in cars in actual laneways instead of. So many issues of parking on the street that we see in suburbia and then also space to actually plant trees in people's yards. So that's where that one stands right now. It's not yet approved, of course, the Kaivan lands. So next question was about one of the proposals. So in the meeting that we had on Kaivan, they showed. The traffic patterns and stuff. And one of the proposals they showed was a a roundabout at Rochelle and Perth. So that's not, that's not proposed to be built. I'm not. Entirely sure why they actually had that on their on their proposal. I think what they did was they looked at the traffic volumes out of Rochelle. And said, you know, is it something that would would require? A roundabout in that area. Or, you know, what would be the feasibility of it? I mean, ultimately. The traffic flow patterns, especially the the northern piece that goes out to Cedarstone. That traffic flow will likely come out Nixon Farm where you actually already have a satellite there. So that's not in the plan there. Question about plans to have bike path or lane from Richmond to Stittsville. So that's one of the things. There's so many challenges with 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 rural development, right? So you, you have a an old established community in a rural area that was built to standards. The best example of of. Changing standards is Moore Street. Half of Moore Street has a sidewalk, the other half doesn't. The sidewalk just ends in someone's yard because it was built in two phases and the and the. The standards for sidewalks changed over the time for requirements. So when it comes to actually trying to connect Stittsville and Richmond from a, from a, you know, a cycling perspective. The best opportunity we had came when we resurfaced Huntley Road. So Huntley used to just be, you know, seven and a half meters wide. With with paved with the paved shoulders, seven meters, seven half meters with the with gravel shoulders, sorry. And then when we just resurfaced it recently, we added those paved shoulders. So it provides a, it provides a one point five meter. Lane on either side of the on either side of the white line. A multi-use pathway is generally three meters wide. And so. We try to take that opportunity. As best as possible when we surface roads to find those opportunities to to create more space for for cycling. And to make it a bit safer. And that's what we've done. So that really is the the best connection that we can offer at this point between Richmond and Stittsville is those paved shoulders on. On Huntley. A question about why the speed limit has not been reduced on McBean. So McBean, if I'm not mistaken, is fifty zone. We do have the. The reduced areas for for the school zone. So we have the school zone area. It does have a different designation than the rest of the streets in the village. So it's more of an R T O road, whereas the other ones have a residential designation. So it's a different. It's a, it's a different. Classification. So it gets the speed limit that gets assigned to it is is different. Certainly, if you, right now, if you did a a speed survey on it, it would support the speed limit for fifty. But if you go through, you know, if I mentioned that design changes that you could have later on, you could actually design the road to a slower speed. So. All these new roads have to be designed at slower speeds and it's the design that makes the speed. It's it's not. You know, drivers will generally, if you don't put any signs on roads. Drivers will generally drive to the the speed that they're comfortable with. And that is. All in road design. That's kind of the problem with Perth Street. It's overdesigned. So. You know, we get so many speeding concerns on Perth Street because it's comfortable for drivers to speed on there, even unknowingly. And that's why we put the the speed display boards on there and on on. On McBean. But certainly the opportunity to lower the speed. Will come with that design period where we can actually look at changing how. It looks and how it feels for the driver. You know, even with the bridge, you know, putting that, putting that divider up between the lanes and the and the sidewalk space on the bridge. You know, if we can look at that, how we design that, you know, trying to extend that type of idea, not obviously putting a wall up along McBean Street, but that same idea with how we design. On McBean before it gets resurfaced. Question about Old Richmond Road between Cambrian and Fallfield being resurfaced. I don't believe. I know Fallfield is slated for renewal between Eagleson and Moody. In the coming years, but I don't believe Old Richmond Road is on that list, unfortunately. So I don't, I don't have that. I don't have that on my on my projected list. I have a a meeting. Later this month with Infrastructure Services. So we meet every year to talk about the the next, you know, three to five years for. Our Works Program on Capital Works on on Roads Renewal. So I'm happy to to raise that with with staff. So I mentioned the, so question about effort to control speed on Perth Street between Eagleson and Shay. So I mentioned, obviously, the. The signalized crosswalk will be something that will, you know, grab attention for drivers. They'll see that it'll be different. It'll be something that. Increases their awareness. You know, could we do more in that area specifically after you get to the splits? We could certainly look at that and see what what the options are, right? It'd be nice to get a a speed display board or at least a. A board if they're to record what we're seeing, the the traffic speeds that we're seeing. I don't like to just go out and just do traffic coming measures. Until we know for sure that there is that we are seeing those issues. So we do have. The boards that we can place out there temporarily just to gather to gather some information about those. Obviously, we did that. We did that on on Fortune. So we did that in Fortune before we did the the flex stakes on Fortune. And we're lowering the speed limit anyways, unfortunately. And then same with Moore Street. So we've done, we tried to take the steps before we go and do. Before we do. Before we implement things that we don't, we want to make sure are in the right spaces. Oh, yeah. So a question, this is a tough one because this is this is pretty, this is super local. So it's just about, well, personal issues on Bald Eagle. On the drainage ditch. I can take that one away. So I have, I have your name here and I'm going to take that away because it's not necessarily a a community wide issue. It's also not, it's. It's a tough one because it's it's a private issue. It's it's on the lot line between. The homeowners and the neighboring landowner to the north. So let me, let me pull that one away. And I'll get back to the individual. If you want in the chat box, if you want it or in the chat box or in the questions. I'm I'm not sure. I mean, I see your name. I'm not sure if I have your email address. If you just want to pop it in there. On the wild person question, then I'll, I can take that offline. My team can get back to you. Question, but would that be a high school in the Madamie development? It will not. Its intention is that it's, it was identified for an elementary school. My assumption would be that that's the future Richmond Public School. But I I'm just speculating. You have an older school. I look again. I'm not trying to compare them. I'm not trying to compare them, um. For any reason than the fact that they're, they are comparable in these situations, but both Manic Public School and Richmond Public School are, are older schools. Uh, my mom went to Richmond Public School. Not saying she's old, but I'm just saying she went there. And. Both those communities have OCDSB identified lands in their growth areas. We know that how the, the model is changing, you know, South Carolina High School, what, what's going to happen with it when the new public high school opens up in. In Stittsville, you know, when I went there, it was sixteen hundred kids. Now it's more around thirteen hundred and fifty. I think actually have a high enrollment next year. Uh, which is a positive, but we know that's going to shift. We know that once Stittsville has a high school of its own, we know that's going to shift. So what does that mean for the high school? What does that mean for the future version of public school? So I could see maybe more of a balancing, almost creating a one to six and a seven to twelve. But I'm not the trustee. I don't work at the school board. I'm just throwing out some, uh, some of my own thoughts that I can think of. In that area with, with how they manage it, how they manage the future schooling in, in, in the village. There's certainly need, obviously with the growth, you need, you need those schools, you need that space. Um, question about will there ever be city water? Uh, it's highly unlikely. So these developments will all, are all on. A form of, of municipal water. So it's a communal well system which is owned and operated by the city. But it's actually not, it, it just won't be, you're not going to get the water that comes from Britannia LMU Island to those purification plants. Uh, all the, all of the communal well systems that we have. So whether it's, whether it's Munster or whether it's the, the new one in Kai Van. The one in, in the, the Glen, they all have to adhere to the same standards that are. That are two purification plants exist to in the city. Um, so. So that, that will happen. So you, you will have the, the proper water. It will be safe drinking water. It'll be the same standards that the city of Ottawa. Has for drinking water in the urban area. Uh, but the likelihood of an actual pipe being extended all the way down to Richmond. Um, is unlikely. I will say that the communal well systems that are being built are. Built to accommodate more than just the subdivisions that are being built. They actually are. Built to a capacity that could take on the rest of the village if that necessity, uh, was to present itself. Progress on the Richmond Nursery. Uh, my good friend, that, that's a joke. I don't want someone to actually hear me say my good friend and think I was being serious. Um, so the owner of the Richmond Nursery, unfortunately, the same owner as the Plaza. Uh, in the village. It's, it is an eyesore. You're right. So we, we did some things to, to deal with some of the issues that he had previously. And it's all through bylaw. Uh, this is not a person that's easy to deal with. Um, got another issue in Manic with him. Bought a property, did something illegally, trying to work through that. It's, you know, it's, I look at the cash for trash situation up on Flue Ellen, been fighting that issue for. Uh, eight years, mostly through bylaw and the courts. Um, they don't side with the city, you know, it's, the, the process doesn't, doesn't seem to favor the city. It seems to favor the. Uh, the landowner, which I guess to a degree can be nice, but in a situation like this, when it's, uh, when the property becomes such an eyesore. Uh, it's very unfortunate. So. I haven't, uh, checked in with our bylaw on that recently. I know that we've had complaints. I know that, uh, it's a property standards issue. There is. There is a process for filing those complaints. You call three-on-one, you register complaint. With bylaw on the, the condition of that property and they open up a ticket to go and look at it and to try to address it. I'd have to go back. I think there's still an open ticket on that one. So I'd have to go back and see. Where that stands, uh, with, with bylaw. Question about. What is the expected population when all is said and done? Uh, so when all is said and done is. Somewhat subjective because we don't necessarily have a growth rate. Uh, we know that the growth is happening. We know it's, we know it's happening a bit. More smoothly. I mean, for a bit, bit more quickly right now with COVID, uh, there's obviously increased demand. Uh, there's not too many lots for sale, uh, or houses for sale in Richmond right now, for that matter, and they aren't, uh, that inexpensive. But the way that the cities, that rural residential land survey shows, it shows that, so right now there's around two thousand properties, the two thousand units. In the village of Richmond. That rural resident residential land survey shows that there's. The possibility of upwards of about forty-eight hundred additional units in Richmond. But again, that's not happening overnight. That's happening in years. And that's just in the existing village boundary, which as I showed you is, except for that Cardell piece has existed. For hundred and fifty years. So it's a lot. It's a lot. There's no question. The Western Development Lands itself are about two thousand units or so. And then you have to look at the other pieces. So the Cardell piece, the Taggart piece, the other infill possibilities throughout the village and where those stand. Um, and that's where you get up to that number. So what the population would be at the end of that is, I mean. You know, there's two thousand homes, the population's five thousand. I mean, it's, it's feasible that by twenty sixty, twenty seventy. Um, the population of Richmond could be, you know, over ten thousand people. Uh, would it keep its village designation? I mean, it, it will. You're, you're surrounded by agricultural land. I mentioned at the start, the agricultural protection, if we can keep that in place, make sure that we're, we're doing what we need to do north of the village, uh. We won't allow, I mean, it's, it's almost irrelevant, but we have a policy. We won't allow growth into the urban boundary to grow. Within one kilometer of, of a village. You're about six kilometers away. So it's not, you know, that's not something that really applies right now. Uh, but. Every intention will be to maintain all of our rural villages as rural villages. Into the future, even though the growth is happening. Question about housing values and how that might affect taxes for existing homes. So this is a question I've asked, I've been asked in other places as well. So I mentioned that quickly, you mentioned the, the, the housing prices. So. When you get your property reassessed, so MPAC comes in, they do their, their updated assessment. They did it in twenty twelve, they did it in twenty sixteen. So let's do it twenty twenty, it was pushed off twenty twenty-one. The provincial government pushed it off again to twenty twenty-two because of COVID. It's important to note, the city cannot, no municipality can profit from reassessments. The only tool that we have to, to make money off of, to collect money off of assessments is through the property taxes. And the only way we can increase that is through the, the budget approval increase. We can't. You know, treat assessments as a windfall. So there's a balancing act that takes place. The example I'll use is in two thousand twelve, the average, the average assessment increase in two thousand twelve across the city was twenty-six percent. So if your property at that time increased by twenty-six percent. You would have seen no impact on your taxes. Now, if your property value increased by, and your assessed value, your market value, your assessed value. If that increased by forty percent, you would have seen an increase. And then if it increased by only thirteen percent, so you still had the increased assessed value in your property, uh, but it was lower than the average. Then you would have actually seen a decrease in your taxes. So it all, it just, the way that balances out. Again, we can't make money. Um, so there's a, there's a, there, there's an average in the middle and then higher and lower. And it all depends on what that is. And when that happens, so when you get that assessment in the mail from MPAC, it will explain that. If you happen to be in one of the ones that are well above average. You'll get us a second letter. The city will reach out to you specifically on those higher, those higher increase ones, uh, to talk about what that impact is. Ultimately, what we're seeing right now is a fairly. A fairly consistent property value increase across the city, across the region. Um, so. In essence, you know, if every single property doubled in value, there would be no impact on your property taxes. They'd be the same. So that, that's the way, that's the way we look at it. That's the way we have to, to treat it. So it all depends on what actually comes out. So. But knowing that the, even though the property values are skyrocketing, it doesn't mean that your taxes are going to start to go up as a result of that. Okay, I think we're just going through, sorry. A question about that, that sidewalk on Moore that I mentioned, you know, is there any plan to extend it on all the way to Shea? So right now it ends at, uh. It really ends kind of where the intersection three or stop is to Mary Hill. So is there any plan to extend it? A- as of right now, there isn't, there isn't a plan to extend it. Um, I can tell you that. Retroactively installing sidewalks on built-up communities is not. Is not simple. Um, we often get a lot of pushback, uh, from communities when we try to put sidewalks in their front yards. Uh, even though it's the road allowance, it's, it's owned by the city. Uh, when, when you try to extend those sidewalks. Um, it can be, it can be quite difficult. We do often get pushback and we actually have seen proposed sidewalks deleted in plans. Because there was enough pushback from, from the residents in those communities, mostly in Bar Haven. Uh, but that's, that has happened. So as of right now. There are unfortunately no plans to extend that sidewalk to Shea on, on Moore Street. The question about, uh, the crosswalk at, you know, is there not a concern that, uh, they won't be seen? It will be, it will be lit, like it will be a signalized crosswalk with, uh, with a push button and. A signal to, to trigger it. It won't just be a painted line and then, and then letting people just take their chances. Uh, it will be well signed and well lit. Uh, so that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be a concern. Um, the drivers approaching it. Will be approaching it as though they're approaching a signalized intersection. It will be very similar to that. Question about any plan for a French school. So I don't know that. All I know is that the. Likely no, because the French. The French board, uh, didn't identify lands. So when subdivisions come up now, could it still happen in the, in the other subdivisions, as soon as possible? Uh, but as of right now, I don't know of any lands in the village that have been identified, uh, to reserve for the French board. Timeframe on the walkway from Fortune to Kai Van at Strawn to be completed. Who? I don't, but I will get back to you. I have, I see, obviously I know who asked that question. Um, I think they were hoping to do that. Last fall, they wanted to get it all done last fall, but it got pushed. So I expect it to happen, uh, shortly. Uh, but I will get an update on that. Um, it's Kai Van's responsibility to build it. So I'll get an update on that, uh. And provide that response to you. Question about the turn lane at Perth and Shea, if it can be positioned a little further out on Perth. Traffic turning right onto Perth from Shea are hard pressed to avoid cars turning left onto Perth from Shea. Okay, well, I mean, this is one where I, I don't have the answer to off, offhand. Uh, I have to take it away and go to our, our traffic group. And, uh, and get that response there. And then thank you, person who wrote me the question about wild person. Thank you for giving me information. I appreciate that. Uh, question from a Bald Eagle resident about asking to reverse the lot. So. I did talk of this a bit with staff. It looks as though, so the question is, I showed you the, the plan earlier. For the Green Eastlands off of Cedarstone, the north side, which back on to, back on to. Bald Eagle, the backyards of Bald Eagle and those homes back on. So backyard onto backyard. Uh, and then the road goes along the front side of those homes right up against the, the municipal drain. Um, my understanding is that. The width just isn't there. So in order to, because I think, I think. If they could, I think they would, because I think those houses, if those houses were fronting onto a street that was right behind your homes. And we're backing onto the municipal drain where they have that big setback, uh, before you get to the rest of Fox Run. I think they would do that because I think they'd be able to increase the values in those lots. But I think the width isn't there. I think the, the, it's a very narrow space, right? So. It is identified for future development, so they do have the right to develop. I know that's been a question before, uh, but property rights are, are. It, it, it does apply to everyone. I mean, and they do have a right, uh, to build there. But if you put the road, you can't put the road right behind the homes. It can't be right behind the home. So it has to be setback. Once you get that setback, you run out of space to fit the road allowance and the actual homes. But I, I, again, I explored it with staff. I talked to staff briefly about it. And I do know that, that Kai Van is aware of that request and they've received that request. But I haven't spoken to Kai Van, uh, recently to see where they're at with that. But I, my understanding is that it doesn't, it just doesn't fit. Uh, question about, this is a question that I don't know where this one comes from. It's an anonymous person that's asking it. Um, I think it's just fodder from people who like to criticize or like to. Spread conspiracy theories, but any talk of those who run private wells forced to pay water bills, absolutely not. Uh, it would be impossible. We'd have to meter, the city would have to meter every private well. They'd have to take responsibility for. For the operation of your well, the functionality of it, everything. It, it just, it's. It's not happening. Um, it's, it's a, it's a weird rumor that rears its ugly head from time to time. What is going on with the unfinished retirement home behind the old value mark? So that has been. An endless, um, an endless issue, as everyone knows. The. They needed to go through a bunch of hoops in order to get to a point where they could finally finish it. Uh, that was the same with the. The, the three-story building that's actually finally done. So it's done, people living in it. The next phase for them is that five-story building, finishing that five-story building. And getting people in there. Uh, they had to deal with the, the way that the site works. The original plan just didn't make sense. I don't even know how it was approved in two thousand and five. Cause it just doesn't make sense. How it all configures, how it all fits together with the, with the former Hyde Park. Uh, area at the front and then the, the other buildings that all fit into the same sort of road system. I mean, originally, the entire development. Was designed to come out onto Perth Street from that small lane that runs through Hyde Park. That was the whole plan. They had no plans to connect anywhere else. It's, it, it honestly boggles the mind as to how that, how that plan went forward. But the current owner is still working through. Uh, some issues with the condo corporation and working through some agreements with the city. But I know they're trying to get to a point where they can, they needed the condo corporation thing in place so they can. Seek the financing they need to get the building done. They still have every intention of finishing that building. And they were hoping, I, and I don't know where it's at, at the moment, of getting things underway this year. So twenty twenty-one, getting things going. So they can start to finish that, uh, that five-story building. The, the building on the south side has to be, has to be torn down. I, it only, they only ever built one floor, but it's, it's, it's to be a three-story building as well, uh, but they had to start from scratch with that one. What would be the process to add a shade covering to the park? Well, we can look at that. How about you email me? So send me an email if there's a park that you're looking at. I mean, you mentioned the park here, it's Creekside. Um, so. When we do these park plans, we try to come up with the amenities that fit and that fit within the budget. Um, but you know, if there's something that we can do to add. Uh, a feature and elements, uh, because the trees obviously aren't growing up yet. Um, certainly reach out to me, scott dot Moffett, arbor dot C A, and we'll see what we can do. I know another, uh, individual reached out to me, a nine-year-old girl reached out to me recently, said they want a monkey bar, so Shannon House Park. So we're going to do that. So maybe we can do the shade thing over at Creekside Park as well. The next one, so the other comment here, it's. It's about an issue in Cardell and it's, uh. Yeah. So I'm aware of that issue. It's a, it's a, it's a water quality issue. I'm aware of that issue. Um, if you've emailed me, I know a couple residents, I'm not sure how many houses are impacted by it, but a couple residents have, uh. Have. Uh, reached out to me. Uh, so if you haven't done that, do that. And if, um, if you have, then I'll go back and, and see where that's at. Cause I know staff were involved in that, uh, in that discussion as well. Okay, so that's it for the questions there. I have to go through a bunch in the chat box. If you don't want to stick around, it's okay. Uh, I am recording this and I will post it on our, on our website. Um, so that we can. So that others can, can view it. Um, you know, obviously I appreciate everyone who's attending right now. It's, uh, the biggest number I've had at any of the, uh. The town halls I've hosted so far. Um, so, so, so some of these questions, I'm, I'm just going to scroll through the, the chat box. And. To get some of the questions are repetitive to what I've already answered. So I just want to look at that. The question, this one's a tough one. So I mentioned that earlier. So the question is, why are we letting Richmond look like every other suburb? It, it's. You know, there are some differences. I know it's hard to see it, but there are some differences with how Richmond will grow. Than how, let's say, Bar Haven can add or leans growth. Um, you know, the lots aren't exactly the same. There are some larger lots. There are. A bit more increased setbacks. Um, certainly the timeline for the growth is, is different. Um, but there, there will be a lot of similarities with higher density growth. You know, when you look at, uh, village growth, there is a desire. There is still a desire out here. It's, you know, it's ju- usually less than ten percent of all growth happens in the rural area. But. But it is higher density because it is on full servicing. And I mentioned that earlier about the different stages of Richmond's development. Um, larger lots, if it's, you know, if we have development in certain communities still on, on well and septic, you're still required to have. Uh, an acre, an acre lot within a village boundary. So North Gore will grow with larger lots, uh, because it's all on well and septic. Richmond isn't that. Richmond will, will only grow on water and sewer. Uh, so as a result, the lots are smaller and you fit more in. And the al- the, the alternative of not fitting more in is that you expand more and Richmond. Doesn't have a lot of growth, a lot of area to expand that isn't agricultural land. Um, you'll have to start dipping into some of the marginal stuff. In reality, because of the floodplain on the Jock, as you head into the former Napean portion, the other side of Eagleson. The high value of the land north of Richmond, um, along Shea and, and, and Huntley. You know, it's very unlikely you're going to see any growth up there for, I know there's a, there's a lot, there's a piece of land up there for sale. Looks like it would be built on, but. I'd be shocked if I'm alive and that ever gets built on. Uh, so in all likelihood, it's, it's west. And from a traffic management perspective, west is probably the worst option. Uh, but that's the most marginal land out to Joyce Road. So it's, it's not something we necessarily want to deal with. We don't want to see, uh, village expansion in Richmond. We'd like to see, can we manage? The growth within the space that we have. Uh, so that's really what it comes down to is that. If we continue to grow with larger lots, we'd fill up the boundary faster. It's not something you and me have to worry about today or the next ten, fifteen years, but it. It's not something you and me have to worry about today, or in the next 10, 15 years, but it would be something that would have to be, you know, considered, you know, 25, 30 years from now, as you started to build the same type of home over and over again. The other part is also housing, housing affordability and variety. You know, a lot of these communities grew with the same types of houses. Every single development was the same type of house. So you didn't have that, that housing affordability, the only way to age in place, well, you couldn't. You couldn't age in place because the, the starter home, you look now, some of the prices. It's hard for someone to start, to start here in, in Richmond. But with some of the, the towns that are being developed, some of the different housing options, you'll have that ability. So yeah, there is, there is some similarities to suburban growth in a village like Richmond right now and Manetick for that matter. But there are, you know, there's pros and cons to that, no question. Question about what is the water plan for the, I'm not sure if that's the same question, but it's, it's any future developments will be on communal well. I know that the current ones, some of them are on, on individual wells, all future growth, all future subdivisions. The larger ones, the larger scale ones, so the ones I showed you, Taggart and Cardell, will all be on a communal well system. Question about will King's Grocer be able to handle this influx of people? It was built for that. The reason why there's a new, the new grocery store, why they moved out of Value Mart was because of the coming growth. That's why it was built there. That's why it, it's larger than what the Value Mart was. It was built with that consideration in mind. The growth hasn't happened at the same pace that I think they were probably anticipating, but that's, that's why it's there. Question about what did I mean by the, so the landfill site? So I'm just talking, that was going back to the start. Sorry if I'm bouncing around and I talk a lot and I talk too fast sometimes. But we obviously, the city owns a landfill. It's on Moody Drive. Within the next 20 years, it's, it's proposed to be at capacity. I don't want to cite a new landfill. Landfills don't go in the urban area. Landfills go in the rural area. And I don't want to deal with that. I don't want you guys to deal with that. I don't want anyone to have to deal with that in the future. So the steps that we take in the next five, 10 years will be important to avoid needing a future landfill. So that's what we're looking at. That's, that's something, that's one of the things that we look at. You know, a landfill also costs about $300 million. An incinerator costs more than that. And has some concerns as well, because they don't build those in the urban area either. They build those in areas where there's no houses around because of some issues with them. So we have a lot of things to consider as to how we're going to manage our, our waste stream over the next, you know, half century. But in my mind, the last two options on our list have to be a modern incinerator, which has some concerns and incredibly elevated cost to it. Not just the capital cost to build it, but the operating cost. So that money that you spend on your taxes every year for garbage collection, we'd have to double that in order to run an incinerator. So not something I'm super interested in doing at the moment. Okay. So I think I answered that question. Answered that question. Sorry. Some of the questions again are a bit, are the same. I've already answered them. So let me keep going here. Question about, so I mentioned the 30 kilometer hour speed. So it's a design thing. I mentioned the design issues. So when you, you know, you travel on Huntley Road, you travel at a certain speed that you feel comfortable at. The same will be on McBean, the same will be on Shannon House. So new communities, just like I mentioned, the standards with Moore have changed with that sidewalk. It's the same with new communities. They are to be designed with a design standard for 30. Asking if that can be applied to all residential. You can change a sign. It doesn't necessarily change the travel speed. That's why just changing the speed limit on Fortune isn't good enough. We have to do something else. So we use the flex stakes. You know, as, as growth happens, as Royal York connects, there's going to be an extra stop sign. There's going to be different things, right? So as, as you go forward, you have things that, that alter the speed of the road. But unless you, you can't just change the sign to 30 from 40 and expect to change, you have to change the road. So what we're doing with these other roads is we're starting them from scratch and we're getting them right from scratch. So that we don't, we aren't creating issues that we already know exist elsewhere in these newer communities. Question about the lands. So the lands behind Creekside, the community and next to the King's Independent, they were conveyed to the city by the developer. So it's just, and conveyed with an odd, an odd stipulation that it's not to be farmed anymore. So one of the challenges we have now is that we have some vacant land that's going to be overgrown with weeds. And to be honest, there is no plan for that. There is no plan to manage that. It's just vacant lands. That would be going to a natural, a natural setting. I think they'd be better if they were still farmed, but given that they, well, we'll see what's possible there. But I mean, ultimately we actually even changed the zoning to not have them farmed. But what, you know, if there are options there for tree planting, that could help out a lot too. So we'll see. If the city, someone else reached out to me on this, maybe it was you on this recently. So the city, Redeemerby Conservation Authority, you know, is there an opportunity to do some tree planting in that area? Wouldn't be a bad, wouldn't be a bad idea. We, we own the land. So might as well get some use out of it in that floodplain area and behind those homes, make some more green space. But yeah, so that's, I have to look at that to see what's, what the, what the options are there. Yeah. So just please preserve the area around creeks and drains for pathways for all to enjoy. Yeah. And certainly that's obviously more of a, you know, it's tough when you look at the old, the old plan at Richmond, that grid that I showed you at the start. There weren't really any park considerations in that area. The creek runs through it. So you get some benefit with Bob Slack Park and different spots off of it, the Richmond Conservation Area. But no actual, you know, city parks identified within that box. All of the big parks are outside of that original grid of the village. So you know, Shannon House Park and King's Grant and Sarah McCarthy Park, the new ones in the, in the Ki Van and Matamie subdivisions. It's interesting. Question about will more, with more people, where there need to be a full-service fire station? So that'll be something that would have to be reviewed in the, in the coming years. Ultimately, you know, the, we are well-served by volunteer fire stations in, in the rural area. They live in our community. Many of them, they've changed some rules. So full-time firefighters can also be volunteer firefighters. There was some, some rules within their union that they couldn't do that, but that's been changed. The two-hatter policy has, has been kind of revoked so that you can have that. You can have more full-time firefighters that live in your community that also, you know, they also work as, as volunteers as well. So they're close. We also pay a different level of taxation, right? So we pay, we pay less on our taxes because we, we fund a volunteer service versus a full-time service. So, but as, as growth comes, I mean, the, the station in, in Stittsville, on Stittsville Main Street is still a, it's a hybrid station. There's some full-time. There's some part-time. So as growth happens, if there's a need, then that would be the logical next step is that it might become a, that might become a, a hybrid station if, if the growth happens where the, where the need, the, the demand is there. There have been new fire stations built within the area that, that offer, that offer that support. The one, Station 46 and 47, so ones in Stittsville, ones in Barhaven, they're both full-time stations. They provide backup support to, to our sector, Sector Eight out of, so Richmond, North Core are both in Sector Eight. So yeah. So I don't know. Some of the comments are, are specific to what I was saying at a time. So it's, it's hard to, to grab. But the question about the incinerator, so someone said about, about the incinerator. So I'm not saying incinerator is not an option. I'm just saying it's probably the most expensive option possible. Also has major environmental concerns. So that's one of the factors that we have to deal with. There aren't a lot of, there's not a lot of support for an incinerator in someone's backyard. It's just a reality. I'm not, I'm not making things up. I'm just saying that if you put that forward, you're going to get opposition. When we have applications for landfills, we get immense opposition from miles away. The same would come with an incinerator. It's just a reality. It's something that, you know, many support, but would you actually want to live next to one? But again, I can't discount the reality of the cost. You know, $350 million of capital money that would have to be found to, to build an incinerator. The one in Durham and York. So it's, it's the top, it's Covanta. It's one of the top end ones. It has the, it's the most updated one that you could find. I think you might be referring to the one in Tobaco in your comment there, but that one is, is a newer one. They haven't met their electricity output that they proposed to meet. They haven't met their environmental targets that they said they'd meet as well. Further between the years of 2017 and 2029, the residents will have paid for it twice. Because of the increased tipping fees, the increased taxes that come with operating that facility, I would have to increase your garbage rate on your taxes from a hundred dollars a year to $200 a year. And that's only going to keep going up because it's only going to keep, it's only going to cost more to run it and we have to pay for it to build it in the first place. So there are other options out there. We're going to hear about those options at committee next, next, next month. There's different things, you know, Plasko was too good to be true, but the contract we had at the city was zero capital cost. And then there's a bunch of off-ramps if it, if it failed to get off of it. But zero capital cost is amazing. It's just too bad the technology didn't work, but there are technologies that do work and they're only getting more. And we do have time. We have time to look at where we handle our waste because we do have time in our landfill. And the more we divert, the more space we create in that landfill. So we've increased diversion through the green bin. We need more participation in that. We've tried to make it easier. We've added plastic bags and over the last year to make it easier for people to put their waste in the green bin. It gets picked up every week. It's all the smelling stuff. You put it in a, in a, in a plastic bag like you would. Obviously, if you, if you've been using paper bags, keep on doing that. But we're doing everything we can to increase diversion. And so we can lengthen life for a landfill, but we also need to know how we're going to, how we're going to plan that. And then I'm, one next question. Any progress? Good point on the, on the, on the wells and the, on the, but generally, so that means on the farming side. So that's fair. So again, we'll follow up. I think if you, if you don't want to email me, I'm happy to follow up with you. I don't want to say anyone's name because again, I go post this, I post this video publicly. So I don't want to just, I don't want to violate any confidentiality issues that we might have. So that's the benefit of the webinar, but also I can't be too personal. So any progress on the vacant land across the Richmond Arena along Perth Street? Nope. Nope. That's a piece of land. That's, that's all that land. So that's the, the King's Grant side is, I would assume you're referring to the King's Grant side of, of Perth at Huntley. It is zoned. It does permit a commercial development, but we haven't seen any proposals on that. You know, for years. So it's there. It has the opportunity, but nothing, nothing going on with it at that point. Just going back to the Q and A. I think I've mostly addressed some questions. So there are some comments here that we're just getting that I, that I have answered, that I have answered. So the last four questions are all from the same individual. So it's about Adelaide, Shea and Perth. It's about a skate park. So there is going to be a skate park in the new subdivision. So different things of that. If you've, if you've written that, so just to avoid sort of repeating to everyone else that's been here and it's also eight o'clock. So I generally try to wrap up so we can let people get on with their nights. But feel free to please email me. So scott.moffett.ca. Again, I do post this online. So the answers to these questions are, are, have already been said. But just for the sake of, of letting people go and get on there with the nights, I don't want to go in too many circles with, with answering questions that have already been, have already been asked. But by all means, I don't want to not answer your questions though. So, so please reach out to me via email. That would be appreciated. Okay. So I think that's, that covers it again. So if there's questions I haven't answered, questions that you still want to ask, by all means, please reach out to me, contact me. I'll say it again, scott.moffett.ca. I really appreciate your engagement. I went through a ton of questions the last 45 minutes. Appreciate the fact that you, you came here and, and took your, your evening, which the sun is just going down. Appreciate the fact that you, you spent your, your last, you know, 90 minutes sitting here and staring at my face as I just talk non-stop. Probably too much. So thank you and enjoy the rest of your evening and I look forward to talking to you again, hopefully in person. Take care.